And welcome to our eighth session. As we study our study in Acts, we'll be going through today on June the 10th, Acts, chapter 16, verse 35, and we'll go through 19, verse 41. And so, we're going to be covering a lot of ground today. It really could be divided up into two sections, but there's, there's a lot of, I won't call it filler, but there's a lot of stuff in there that we can gloss over that's kind of repetitive and not really giving us much new information. And so, I feel like we can cover quite a bit today. And I'll try to focus us in on a couple little parts of it. And maybe we could spend some more time on that. But I thought I would try to get us covered quite a bit. This will take us up to be finished in 12 weeks total by July of the 15th. And that's us taking off the week of the 4th. So, we'll have three more sessions up until the 4th of July week, and then two more to close us out and be done for a total of 12 sessions. But today, we'll be doing 1635 through 1941. And so, what we'll see in this section that we're getting ready to read is a number of the same stuff that we've been looking at before. Continued tensions, particularly between the Jewish elements of the synagogue, the more like pro-law segments of that Jewish population in the synagogue, and some, some increasing divergence between what we would call the Gentiles and the Jews, or Christianity and Judaism. So, you'll start to see even more divergence happening and emerging there in these stories. And we'll also see that as, as that tension comes up, the church becomes increasingly more focused on the Gentile populations, while not forgetting the Jewish populations. It's still kind of that pattern of going to the Jews first and then to the Gentiles. We see through the course of time and the previous chapters that we've been reading, we've seen the movement of Christianity, or the Way, or whatever you want to refer to it as, as becoming much more Gentile in scope, while not forgetting its Jewish origins, particularly not forgetting its connections as well to the church in Jerusalem, and to all that that entails as well. We also see a lot of stuff in this section about how Paul and his companions, as they go through Asia Minor and what we would call Greece, Greece and Turkey, as he's moving through those two countries and the areas surrounding it, that we see a lot of conflict happening with the authorities, the political authorities, the both Jewish, Roman, and Gentile. The, the Roman population and the pagan populations of those cities. We also see a tension emerge that's maybe not quite fair to just call it a tension. In many cases, it's outright riot between Gentiles, pagans, and Christians. So, and oftentimes, it's the Jews teaming up with the pagans against the Christians in some cities, particularly like in Ephesus. But we'll, we'll cover all that here soon. And we, we see all sorts of other little things emerge, particularly with regards to Paul. And so, I'll try to, to cover some of those smaller aspects of Paul's ministry in, as we, as we go along. But last week, we left off with, I kind of got us into what we were supposed to be talking about today, 16, verse 35. But before we begin, let's pause for a moment of prayer. Let's pray. "Gracious God, we give you thanks for your advent among us. We give you thanks for the witness of your followers, the disciples, and Paul, and all of those whose names we may not even know, who have brought us to where we are in our faith today, worldwide. We thank you, oh Lord, for the witness of your holy scripture that Luke has given to us in this book of Acts. And we ask, as descendants of that same tradition, and as people of that same story, that you would be with us this day in all of the struggles that we face. We particularly lift up to you our nation, and all of those who are experiencing turmoil and difficulty. Particularly, we lift up those cities that have been impacted by riots and looting. And we lift up to you, oh Lord, all of your people everywhere. Help us that we might be strong witnesses of your faith here in this place where we find ourselves. In all things, we lift our prayers up in the name of Jesus Christ, our risen Lord and Savior. Amen." So, I wanted to start us off with where we ended last time. Let me just give you a quick intro to it. Paul and Silas, it is Paul and Silasism at this point. Y'all feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm saying something wrong. Yes, Paul and Silas. Verse 25, "About midnight, Paul and Silas were praying and singing hymns to God, and the prisoners were listening to them." So, they've been imprisoned for preaching the word of God. And they get drug in front of the marketplace there in Philippi. And remember, Philippi was a Roman colony. And a Roman colony is different than any other city that just happens to be a part of the empire. A Roman colony is supposed to be like a little Rome. So, we don't have a cognate that correlates very well in our own culture, but it would be kind of like a state capital, supposedly being a lot like the, the, like Washington DC, you know? That might be a loose way to compare it. But every Roman colony was supposed to be like a little Rome. And so, the rule of, of Rome and the presence of Rome would have been made manifest in those cities in a special way. And it was also a place where legions of troops were usually based as well. So, they might have had a, it might be like kind of having a military base at those cities. So, Philippi is a thoroughly Roman city. And they're, Paul and Silas have been brought in front of the, the folks in charge there. And they've been charged with telling people to do things that were not Roman in the way that they were. And so, they're in front of the authorities in the marketplace. And they're told that they're advocating customs that are not lawful for us as Romans to adopt or observe, verse 21. And so, "The crowd joined in attacking them, and the magistrates had them stripped of their clothing and ordered them to be beaten with rods. And after they had given them a severe flogging, they threw them into prison and ordered the jailer to keep them securely." So, they did all this stuff, and at midnight, their, Paul and Silas are singing hymns, and the prisoners are listening to them, we're told, as if they had a choice. And a great earthquake happens, and their shackles are loosed, and all the doors of the prison cells are opened. And, but Paul and all the other prisoners stay put. And the jailer, whose life, I mean, it would have been typical for that jailer to have fallen on his sword, because if you lose the prisoner that you're responsible for, then that prisoner's fate is supposed to be your fate. And so, whenever he realizes that Paul and Silas have not fled, he takes them to their, he says, "What must I do to be saved?" And they said, "Believe on the Lord Jesus and be baptized." And so, the jailer and his whole family that day are baptized. And he treats them very hospitably. He, you know, tries to heal their wounds and stuff, and he gives them food. And in the morning, the magistrates have decided that they're going to let Paul and Silas go. And the jailer reported the message to Paul, saying, "The magistrate sent word to let you go. Therefore, come out now and go in peace." In verse 37, we get kind of that moment where everything changes there in, in Philippi. "But Paul replied, 'They have beaten us in public, uncondemned men who are Roman citizens, and have thrown us into prison, and now they're going to discharge us in secret, certainly not let them come and take us out themselves.' The police reported these words to the magistrates, and they were afraid when they heard that they were Roman citizens. So, they came and apologized to them, and they took them out and asked them to leave the city. And after leaving the prison, they went to Lydia's home. And when they had seen and encouraged the brothers and sisters there, they departed." So, the magistrates would have never thought in this Bywater town that, because remember, Roman citizenship was something that not everybody had. Certainly, not everybody, even in Rome, had the, the authority and the, the honor of being a citizen of the Roman Empire. It would have been not at all like being a citizen of the United States, the way that we are and the rights that we have. It would have been much closer to being like British royalty, like being a duke, or a duchess, or a lord of some sort, you know? I mean, like, it would have been a very high honor to have been a Roman citizen. And as a Roman citizen, it meant that there were several things you couldn't do to them. For instance, you were not supposed to ever be able to imprison a Roman citizen, and you most certainly weren't to beat them. They weren't even really supposed to be brought in front of the courts. I mean, this was, I can't stress how much of a privilege having Roman citizenship was in that time. It's, it's likely maybe even those magistrates could have not been Roman citizens. And so, when, we're told there in verse 38, "And they were afraid when they realized that Paul and Silas were Roman citizens." This is a big deal. I mean, they could have been liable to death, these magistrates even, for what they had done. So, it's, it's really funny. You never know. The lesson that I take away from that is that, you know, there's a lot of talk with all this racial unrest in our country right now about privilege, and particularly white privilege. And so, one of the things is, is that Roman citizens, you never would have expected, you know, some, if, if it was in our own time and place, you never would have expected, you know, a Hispanic couple of dudes like Javier and Jesus, who, you know, didn't appear to be much. You'd never expect them to be high-ranking Roman citizens. And so, they didn't even question it. They just beat them and threw them into jail. And, you know, it makes, it makes us, it gives us pause to examine our own prejudices. Because even though, I'm, I'm not one of those who feels like race is supposed to be the, the trump card of everything, you know? And I, I confess that I, you know, have trouble. I was listening to the news this morning, and a football player was saying, "Don't call me African-American, I'm black," you know? And, and it's like, well, well, trying to be sensitive to all that sort of stuff, you, you feel kind of lost sometimes in, in order to just, you know, try to be sensitive to everything. But to, to acknowledge our own prejudices and our own built-in things in our legal and justice system, it's, it's obvious that there are, there is at least some level of prejudice that is built into what we have and those, those systems that we operate with. And I think it is important for us to, to look at that. However, everybody, that being said, everybody that I know, particularly, you know, the folks locally here, I'm not saying that, that they're in any way racist, or that they don't treat people just the way that they should be treated. I fully support the local China Grove folks. I even went so far as to take them bagels and coffee and danishes from Panera last week, because I felt like, you know, they were getting kind of a raw deal in the media and stuff. And I just wanted them to know that, that our church and that, that my family really appreciates all that they do. So, I took them some little treats from Panera last week, just to show that. But I, I also want to support all sides in this, you know? I mean, because it's important not to just say, just because it might not be the case here in China Grove does not mean that it's not definitely the case in Minneapolis and/or other parts in our country. So, I'm not trying to, to go crazy with all this, but I think that this story does remind us that there are certain prejudices that we all have. And we, like those magistrates, might never think that Paul and Silas would be Roman citizens. And so, they just get, you know, the short end of the stick, and thrown in prison, and beaten and stuff. And then, when it comes out that this was not at all the thing to do, then they're very afraid, we're, we're told. So, one, one thing that I would lift up to you in the midst of all this, have y'all ever watched any TED Talks, or know what those are? Have you heard of TED Talks? Anybody? Just raise your hand or no? Okay. Well, TED Talks are little short, maybe 20-minute talks that are on different subjects by, by folks in different fields and stuff like that. And one TED Talk that I really have appreciated was by this Nigerian lady named Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie. And it's called "The Danger of a Single Story." And she has one line in that little talk where she says, the, the problem, she, she introduces all this by saying she, you know, was an African girl who grew up under British rule, and she always read children's books, and they were always about English children. And so, when she started writing her own little stories, they always took place in the snow, and she had never seen snow, you know, being in Nigeria. Her characters always drank ginger beer. She didn't even know what ginger beer was, but you know, it's a very common sort of thing in, in England. And so, all her, her characters had names like Carl and things like that, you know, very English names. And she says in that, that the problem with stereotypes is not that they're incorrect. It's not that they're untruthful. It's that they're only a single story. And most of us are made up of multiple stories. We're, we're more than just that single story. You know, I mean, I'm kind of partial to that whenever somebody says, "Oh, this is Curtis, he's a Methodist minister." You know, there's a lot of stu-, a lot of baggage that's up in that. Oftentimes, that is the quickest conversation killer ever, when they find out I'm a preacher, you know? And so, so, the problem with all stereotypes is not that they're incorrect. It's that they're just one story, you know? And it's important for us to, to see things not just as a, a single story, but as all that, that we are. So, if you ever get a chance, search that up online sometime. It's called, it's a TED Talk again, and it's called "The Danger of a Single Story." And it's only about 18 minutes long. And it's one of the most helpful things in talking about race and all of that that I've viewed in the last few years. And so, I just lift that one up to you. Questions, comments on, on the passage from Acts, or anything else? Y'all are being even more quiet than Wanda last week, just herself.
We're a noisy bunch, aren't we?
That's okay. That's okay. All right. Well, I want to, to pick us up then with chapter 17, and we'll, we'll cover some, some ground here. "So, Paul and Silas had passed through, after Paul and Silas had passed through Amphipolis and Apollonia, they came to Thessalonica, where there was a synagogue of the Jews. And Paul went in, as was his custom, and on three Sabbath days argued with them from the scriptures, explaining and proving that it was necessary for the Messiah to suffer and to rise from the dead, and saying, 'This is the Messiah, Jesus, whom I am proclaiming to you.' Some of them were persuaded and joined Paul and Silas, as did a great many of the devout Greeks, and not a few of the leading women. But the Jews became jealous, and with the help of some ruffians in the marketplaces, they formed a mob and set the city in an uproar. And while they were searching for Paul and Silas to bring them out to the assembly, they attacked Jason's house. And when they could not find them, they dragged Jason and some of the believers before the city authorities, shouting, 'These people who have been turning the world upside down have come here also, and Jason has entertained them as his guests. And they're all acting contrary to the decrees of the emperor, saying, 'There's another king named Jesus.' The people and the city officials were disturbed when they heard this, and after they had taken bail from Jason and the others, they let them go." So, let me pause for us here for just a moment. So, the Jews from, from other places were stirring up all of this issue there in Thessalonica. Well, and the Jews from, from Thessalonica were stirring up, folks, Jews and non-Jews, even some ruffians in the marketplace, we're told. And you know, I felt riots and things like that were a thing of the past in our own country at least. And we've certainly learned otherwise. And we've certainly learned in the last couple of weeks with the, the rioting and everything, that it's not just the, the people who feel disenfranchised by all these events that are, are being problematic. I mean, I, that's one of the most depressing parts of this whole thing is that there's so many people who are, like, there's no, even the fact that we have a different verb called looting, like, that's not different than stealing. It's just plain old stealing, you know? And stealing's wrong. And this just setting fire to things. Now, granted, I have to admit, it is kind of fun to, when, when Duke beats Carolina, to take some of those wooden benches in front of the dorms on campus at Duke, and set a big bonfire, and chant around in a circle, you know, and all this. On Franklin Street, I remember them setting a car on fire one day when, when y'all might have prevailed against Duke one time. But like, this whole idea of rioting is just incredibly stupid, isn't it? There's no place for it. But now, as far as non-violence goes, there's certainly a place for that. And as far as protests go, I would never deny people their right to do that, and even would stand with many of them. I won't say all, but with many of them, at least over some of what is being said. But there's no place for this rioting. And, and here we have in, in Acts, chapter 17, stories of riots happening, and this time being sparked by the Jews who are jealous that Paul has, and Silas have been convincing so many of their group, along with some Greeks and not a few of the leading women, to join the Way, or the early church. And so, they take them to the city officials and persecute this one guy named Jason and his family. And, you know, I think one important thing for us to note here is that Christianity is by its very nature politically subversive. Christianity can never be apolitical. I make it a point in my sermons, or I at least try to make it a point in my sermons, and in this time, and in all that I say and do to, I mean, I'm a minister of the gospel, and as such, with that title, I try to be very careful about what I say and what I do. And I, I, I try my best not to, to preach stuff that's political in scope. Now, every time I look back at my sermons, and as I'm crafting them and everything else, I always look at that, and I say, first of all, is this what Jesus is saying? Is this what Jesus teaches us? And if it is, then I'm going to stand behind it. If, whether that's popular, whether that's in conflict with whatever Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever, I'm going to try to preach Christ first and foremost, and, and the gospel. And, but that being said, there's some times when, you know, things just can't be apolitical. Jesus didn't get himself killed because he told us to love each other, you know? He was crucified because he was advocating for things against Rome, and against the, the synagogue, and the temple, and the religious authorities. I mean, Jesus wasn't killed because he told us to love each other, you know? And, and Jesus also was never apolitical. There were plenty of times, one of the most memorable is when he turned over the, the tables in the temple and drove out the money changers. I mean, that could be considered a very political act as well. That being said, I don't think there's much profit to be gained from the church in just being reactionary, and just being revolutionary for the sake of being revolutionary. I, I think that there's always things that we can say and do to make progress. But oftentimes, whenever there's this idea on whatever side, left or right, of perfection and the way things should be, you know, it gets us into, to dangerous territory. And so, I, I think it's important, based on this passage here, to note that what Paul and Silas are doing is, is first and foremost, not political, but religious. But it does have political ramifications oftentimes for them. "So, that very night, the believers sent Paul and Silas off to Berea. And they, and when they arrived, they went to the Jewish synagogue. And those Jews were, these Jews were more receptive than those in Thessalonica, for they welcomed the message very eagerly and examined the scriptures every day to see whether these things were so. Many of them therefore believed, including not a few Greek women and men of high standing. But when the Jews of Thessalonica learned that the word of God had been proclaimed by Paul in Berea as well, they came there too, to stir up and incite the crowds. And the believers immediately sent Paul away to the coast, but Silas and Timothy remained behind. Those who conducted Paul brought him as far as Athens, and after receiving instructions to have Silas and Timothy join him as soon as possible, they left him." So, we see this, this pattern emerge often, don't we? They'll go to, Paul and his companions will go to the synagogue. They'll preach there on several successive Sabbath days. And they'll get some, they'll have some success. Sometimes, they'll have a lot of success. And then, oftentimes, those troublemakers from cities where they had just been will send folks on to, to cause trouble there as well, and they'll end up moving on elsewhere. And so, Paul has been moving quite a bit. We started off, he was in, he was in Philippi. And then, we, we get him moving from Philippi to Amphipolis to Apollonia. And we're not told that he stayed in either of those two places very long, but then he moves to Thessalonica, then he moves to Berea, then he moves to, to Athens. And then, following that, he'll move even further away. But we'll, we'll talk about his movements with that again soon. But let me stop here and just ask if there's questions or comments, observations you'd like to make? Oh, come on, y'all, say something. Okay. Well, we'll pick up verse 16 here. Paul waiting for them in Athens. And I just preached a sermon a couple of weeks ago on Paul at the Areopagus, so I'm not going to say a whole lot to that. I'll just direct you to, to that sermon from, let's see when that was. Let me see if I can tell you exactly. Acts 17, 22 through 31, May 17th was when I preached on that one. So, if you would like to go back and hear a sermon on that, I'll point you to that. It's the Easter, the sixth Sunday of Easter from May the 17th. So, I'll point you to that. So, I won't say a whole lot about that, other than to note that in Paul speaking to the folks at the Areopagus, he's there in Athens waiting on Paul and, or Silas and Timothy to, to meet him. And while he's there, he's distressed about all the many idols in the city, and all the many gods. And he sees one that's, an idol, or an altar set up to the unknown god, just to make sure they don't miss one. And so, Paul says, "It's this unknown god that I'd like to tell you about." And Paul engages in their culture. He doesn't critique and slam their culture right off and say, "Y'all are just a bunch of idol worshippers. This is insane, you need to worship Jesus." He points, he, he gets them from where they are, and tries to pull them alongside him, to take them to where they could be, to a, a new place. And he, he says in this passage that "He tries to be all things to all people, so that by all means he may win some." And I think that just really sums all this up. But, you know, the, the important thing to note here is the welcoming nature that Paul has in his sermons to the folks at the Areopagus. And to note that he doesn't sell out, though. And to note that he doesn't sell out though. In the end, his sermon is still that of Jesus Christ and him crucified. Uh, he's not just saying that it's okay to believe whatever. He's, he's pulling them towards, it says, in the end, you know, you need to believe on Jesus. And, um, and come on, and it's at that point that they, uh, that when they heard of the resurrection of the dead, I meant verse 32 of chapter 17, "Some scoffed, but others said, we'll hear you again about this." And at that point Paul left them, but some of them joined him and became believers, including Dionysius the Areopagite and a woman named Damaris and others with them. So it's, uh, it's neat to, to look at that and to remember all that as we're going through. Any thoughts that y'all might have had in reading about the Paul at the Areopagus? Okay, well, we'll move on to chapter 18 then. Let's see, can I get a, someone to read this for us? Leanne, could I ask you to maybe, uh, read for us chapter 18, verses one through six?
Now, you just want me to read it from my Bible?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Then Paul left Athens and went to Corinth. Then he became acquainted with a Jew named Aquila, born in Pontus, who had recently arrived from Italy with his wife Priscilla. They had been expelled from Italy as a result of Claudius Caesar's order to deport all Jews from Rome. Paul lived and worked with them, for they were tent makers, just as he was. Each Sabbath found Paul at the synagogue, trying to convince the Jews and the Greeks alike. And after the arrival of Silas and Timothy from Macedonia, Paul spent his full-time preaching and testifying to the Jews that Jesus is the Messiah. But when the Jews opposed him and blasphemed, blasphem, you, help me with that one.
Blasphemed.
Okay, blasphemed, hurling abuse at Jesus, Paul shook off the dust from his robe and said, "Your blood be upon your own heads. I am innocent. From now on, I will preach to the Gentiles."
That's good, that's good. Thank you for that, Leanne. I want to, uh, add to this passage. This is something from our gospel lesson that we'll have for this week, for this Sunday. Uh, Matthew, chapter nine, and I'll be reading verse 11 through 15 real quick. Whatever town, Jesus is sending out the disciples at this point. He says, "Whatever town or village you enter, find out who in it is worthy and stay there until you leave. Have you, as you enter the house, greet it. If the house is worthy, let your peace come upon it; but if it's not worthy, let your peace return to you. If anyone will not welcome you or listen to your words, shake off the dust from your feet as you leave that house or town. Truly I tell you, it will be more tolerable for the land of Sodom and Gomorrah on the day of judgment than for that town." So it's interesting, that shake the dust off, isn't it? Um, and what's also intriguing there is the similarity with which Paul is acting and with which Matthew has sent out those, uh, disciples and apostles in chapter nine. Isn't that interesting? How, how just closely related those two are? I, uh, I think that's a really interesting thing. Shaking the dust off your feet. So I want to take a minute here and, uh, ask you a couple of questions. Number one, what new fact have we learned about Paul right here? Anybody? We've learned something about Paul that we didn't know previously, according to, at least if we were just reading through Acts. One thing we didn't know about Paul, we learn right here, uh, in verse three.
He was a tent maker.
He was a tent maker, yeah. Okay, now tents were typically made of animal skins at that point in time. And, uh, I've mentioned this a couple of weeks back, uh, maybe in the, the first session that we had together even, or maybe the second. How Paul, um, as a, would have been kind of like a tanner or been doing a lot of the same stuff as tanners would and how tanneries are just nasty, nasty places in antiquity because you would basically have to soak those animal hides in vats of stale urine. Um, and it would have just been a really stinky place to have been and very stinky work. Uh, Paul would have been more like a garbage collector than anything else, uh, because that's a stench that you just don't get off of yourself at that. But we also learn that Paul, uh, at this point seems to have, uh, I, I mean, it wouldn't be, uh, out of place to say maybe Paul's funding from Sergius Paulus had run out if we were, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to say that this was the case, that Sergius Paulus was a great benefactor to Paul and all that sort of stuff, but it is a, certainly a possibility. Uh, but if that were the possibility and had actually happened, uh, it looks as though much of that, uh, funding has run out at this point. And Paul is working, uh, not to, to, he, he's working as a tent maker to help, uh, you know, keep his, his livelihood going so that he's not reliant just upon the people to where he, uh, he goes. And so he meets some folks, uh, Priscilla and Aquila, and they're also tent makers. And so he works with them, um, in all this. One really intriguing thing about this, uh, fact that Paul is a tent maker, is that it's possible that his Roman citizenship is linked to his work as a tent maker. It's very probable that, um, his father might have gotten the, uh, contract for making all the tents for the Roman armies. Um, and as a, the official supplier of tents to the Roman army, um, then he might have been gifted, that his, Paul's father may have been gifted that citizenship, uh, that Roman citizenship, uh, as a token of appreciation for being the, um, uh, official tent maker of Rome or for, uh, for being one of the official tent makers of the, uh, the Roman empire. So, uh, that's a possibility. I'm not saying that's the way that it was, but it's certainly a viable possibility for, uh, explaining Paul's Roman citizenship and, uh, some of what Paul does. But he's also, uh, what we might call nowadays dual career. Uh, he's working in the church, but he's also working in secular employment as well. And I know a number of, of pastors in our area and elsewhere that, uh, are dual career. Um, many of them that serve very small churches whose membership can't provide for all that they need. And lots of times, some of them are working jobs where they can't devote themselves a hundred percent to, uh, serving a local church. And so oftentimes it's a very sympathetic, um, sort of thing. One of my, my friends, Ray, who lived in my development, uh, back in Asheville, uh, in the same little neighborhood that we lived in, he was a meteorologist for the air force. And he and his wife were both local pastors, serving, um, two different small congregations. And he continued working as a meteorologist in the air force, and I think continues now, and serving a little church of about 15 folks, um, outside of Weaverville. And so, uh, you know, this, this dual, um, relationship of being, uh, of working a secular job and of being a pastor is not uncommon and not, uh, without precedent even in history. So I, that being said, I'm very thankful that this is my only job because there is no way I could, uh, could hold down a secular job in addition to, to what I do here.
Was that with the Baptist minister?
Yeah, yeah, there's, in, in fact, more than half of the, uh, the clergy in the Western North Carolina Conference now, if I'm not mistaken, um, are licensed local pastors who aren't officially ordained, but who, uh, have a license to, to do pastoral ministry and who, um, oftentimes serve churches that are part-time or if they serve full-time ones, uh, it's, it's many times a multi-point charge. So they might serve three churches, you know, for, um, all at once. So I, uh, as, as one for the first 10 years of my ministry who served two churches at once, um, it's hard to do. There's such a thing as part-time, um, pay, but there's certainly not such a thing as part-time pastoring. So I, I think about my colleagues in the ministry who, who, um, hold down multiple jobs often in, in all this, and I'm thankful that I, I don't have to do that. But, uh, so just a little, little, uh, excursus there on Paul as a tent maker. And so he's, uh, he's gone to Corinth now and, um, we see, uh, verse seven. "Then he left the synagogue and went to the house of a man named Titius Justus, a worshiper of God. His house was next door to the synagogue. Crispus, the official of the synagogue, became a believer in the Lord, together with all his household. And many of the Corinthians who heard Paul became believers and were baptized. One night the Lord said to Paul in a vision, 'Do not be afraid, but speak, and do not be silent; for I am with you, and no one will lay a hand on you to harm you; for there are many in this city who are my people.'" And he stayed there a year and six months, teaching the word of God among them. "But when Galio was proconsul of Achaia, the Jews made a united attack on Paul and brought him before the tribunal. They said, 'This man is persuading people to worship God in ways that are contrary to the law.'" Uh, I, I'll parenthetically insert here after verse 13, but, uh, for that matter, so are the Jews, you know? Judaism is, uh, doing the same thing, trying to persuade people to worship God in ways that are contrary to Roman law as well. So it's, it's funny to see how oftentimes it's the, uh, the, those other folks who are being persecuted, who are all too happy to, to help the stronger power persecute a rival, uh, persecuted faction. "The justice Paul was about to speak, Galio said to the Jews, 'If it were a matter of crime or serious villainy, I'd be justified in accepting the plaint of you Jews; but since it's a matter of questions about words and names in your own law, see to it yourselves. I do not wish to be a judge of these matters.'" "And he dismissed them from the tribunal. And then all of them seized Sosthenes, the official of the synagogue, and beat him in front of the tribunal. But Galio paid no attention to any of these things." Okay, so a couple of things to note here. He stayed in Corinth for a year and a half, Paul did. And though a year and a half in my mind is not very long to stay at a place, for Paul, that's quite a while. Later on, we're told he stays in Ephesus for two years. But for Paul, and as much as he moves around, this is, this is quite a long time. Whenever there are many places where he stays just a couple of days or a couple of weeks at most, here he stays in Corinth for a year and a half. It's, it's, uh, helpful that we have both first and second Corinthians in, uh, the New Testament to help us know some of what Paul was dealing with in the, the church there at Corinth. And we get a lot of detail there, but I think part of the reason why we have so much detail about the Corinthian church is because he spent so much time there and so much, uh, energy. We also see that there's a new proconsul, um, and that it's not Sergius Paulus. Remember, proconsuls had a very short term. Although they had great power, their great power was, uh, very short sighted, uh, as a consul of only two years, and they could be kept on for another two as proconsul. Um, but really after that, their influence and power tends to, to be switched to other folks pretty quickly. And so we see Sergius Paulus off the, the, uh, the record now. And there's this guy Galio who was proconsul of Achaia. And Achaia is kind of what we would call mainland Greece. So, uh, we have this happening and he's kind of not really worried about the Jews or the Christians for that matter and kind of saying, ah, I'm just turning a blind eye to all of this. But we see some more tensions there with the, um, the Jews and the Christians in the early church. Questions? So now, um, Paul is in Corinth. And Corinth, uh, whenever you see that, I want you to think about Corinth as being a lot like Las Vegas. What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, right? Well, what happens in Corinth, uh, didn't stay in Corinth, but it's a, a very, um, libertine and cosmopolitan sort of place. So whenever you think of Corinth, think of, you know, a very, uh, a place a lot like Vegas, so to speak. "So after staying there for a considerable time, Paul said farewell to the believers and sailed for Syria, accompanied by Priscilla and Aquila. At Syncrea he had cut his hair, for he was under a vow. And when they reached Ephesus, he left them there, but first he himself went into the synagogue and had a discussion with the Jews. When they asked him to stay longer, he declined, but on taking leave of them, he said, 'I'll return to you if God wills.'" Then he set sail from Ephesus, and when he had landed at Caesarea, he went up to Jerusalem and greeted the church and then went down to Antioch. And after spending some time, he departed and went from place to place throughout the region of Galatia and Fergia, strengthening the disciples." All right, I'm going to share my screen again here and pull up this map. And so what we have happening, um, in this, can y'all see this map now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, Paul started off, he was up here at Philippi, then he went through Amphipolis, Apollonia and, uh, on to, um, Thessalonica, which is right here, and then on to Berea, and then down here to, uh, Athens, then to Corinth, and then to Syncrea. And it's right here, we're told that he cut his hair because he was under a vow. This could be something very similar to a Nazarite vow. You may recall, uh, in the Old Testament in particular, uh, some people being under a Nazarite vow, Samson, for instance. And so you would cut your hair and burn it, uh, and offer it up. Sometimes there were other vows people would make when they were starting a long trip. They would cut their hair off. If, if they were Jewish and they had been in a, a primarily Gentile place, they would oftentimes shave their hair, cut it off and burn it to show that, you know, they were not, they were kind of washing their hands of that culture and going back to Jerusalem. And some of that may have been the case with Paul as well. But, um, Paul showing that he was taking a Nazarite vow shows us that he was not anti-Jewish in stuff. I mean, he was trying to say that the church needs to be open to people who are Gentiles, but at the same time, he's not turning his back against Judaism. He's simply saying all of this Jewish stuff isn't what's most important. But, you, you know, so, uh, Paul's constantly giving nods back to the, uh, the, the Jewish faith and tradition. And he's also constantly trying to, um, to get back up with people in Jerusalem. And so he, uh, he goes from, uh, Syncrea, which is just the other side of Corinth. So if you were traveling east from, uh, Corinth, you would go to Syncrea to that end of the port because it's on, it's way back here on the other end of, of Greece. If you, and you do, wouldn't want to go that far. So it's a lot easier to just go overland and leave from there. It's likely that Priscilla and Aquila had business in Ephesus, and so maybe there was some tent makers convention happening there. And so Paul, uh, rides with them, so to speak, you know, carpools to Ephesus, leaves them there, and then he goes on to Caesarea and then goes down to Jerusalem because he, it's not as though Paul feels like he needs Jerusalem's permission or the Jerusalem church's permission to do what it is that he's doing, but he wants their buy-in as well. And so to, to put it in, in modern terms, Paul is by no means, uh, non-denominational. Uh, he's trying to get the buy-in of all the churches around, including the, the mother church in Jerusalem. And so, uh, it's, it's interesting to note just how, how closely Paul tries to keep tied all of those different, um, structures and institutions to him. He tries to keep Judaism still very tight to him, as well as the Jerusalem church, as well as all of that. So he's, um, moving around quite a bit, but at the same time trying to maintain these connections. And so, um, we get all sorts of, of this sort of stuff here. Cyprian, who's one of the church fathers, writes in AD 50, and I, I just love this quote here. He says, "He who has not the church as his mother, has not God as his father." And I, I think that's a, a good way of thinking about the church and one that's, uh, not, uh, out of keeping with the way that Paul saw his, uh, his faith and the early church. He saw it as, uh, something that was very important to engage in throughout, um, his time and to keep close at hand. He who has not the church as his- who has not the church as his mother, has not God as his father." It's not, Paul's not just off on his own, doing his own sort of thing, but is beholden by the Holy Spirit and also his brothers and sisters in Christ, um, in Jerusalem, in Antioch, and all over the place. And so then he goes back up to Antioch, which we would expect. Um, and then we're told he goes into, to Galatia and Phrygia. And so, uh, he's back in, you know, like Iconium, Lystra, Derby, uh, the city in Antioch. Uh, so he's, he's around back in those places again, and we're not told much about what he does there in that time. Um, but after spending some time there, he departed and went from place to place through the region of Galatia and Phrygia, strengthening all the disciples. And then, uh, verse 24 of chapter 18, "Now there, uh, now there came to Ephesus a Jew named Apollos, a native of Alexandria. He was an eloquent man, well-versed in the scriptures. He had been instructed in the way of the Lord, and he spoke with burning enthusiasm and taught accurately the things concerning Jesus, though he knew only the baptism of John. And he began to speak boldly in the synagogue, but when Priscilla and Aquila heard him, they took him aside and explained the way of God to him more accurately. And when he wished to cross over to Achaia, the believers encouraged him and wrote to the disciples to welcome him, and on his arrival, he greatly helped those who through grace had become believers; for he powerfully refuted the Jews in public, showing by the scriptures that the Messiah is Jesus." Um, so this is an interesting thing. Let me take my screen sharing off now. Um, okay, back to, to normal here. Um, and so this is really neat, because we get Apollos, who is, uh, a Jew from Alexandria. And Alexandria, down in Egypt, is the, it, in the ancient world, had the most famous library of anywhere on the face of the earth. Alexandria was kind of like the equivalent in our day of Oxford, England. You know, the, the Bodleian Library at Oxford's kind of like the center of stuff. And, and anytime you get some Oxford scholar, it's as though he's just always, he or she is always just, you know, considered top of their game and that sort of thing. And so, uh, Apollos is a lot like that. Uh, I, whenever I see his name, I think somebody from, from Oxford. But that being said, even though he's really well-educated, and even though he's much better educated than the tent makers, Priscilla and Aquila, there's still plenty that he has to learn, isn't there? He doesn't even know about the Holy Spirit. Um, and, uh, so let me, let me go down just a little bit more here. "While Apollos was in Corinth, Paul passed through the interior regions and came to Ephesus, where he found some disciples. And he said to them, 'Did you receive the Holy Spirit when you became believers?' And they replied, 'No, we've not even heard that there is a Holy Spirit.'" Then he said, "Into what, then, were you baptized?" And they answered, "Into John's baptism." Paul said, "John baptized with the baptism of repentance, telling the people to believe in the one who was to come after him, that is, in Jesus. And on hearing this, they were baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus. And when Paul laid his hands on them, the Holy Spirit came upon them, and they spoke in tongues and prophesied. Altogether, there were about twelve of them. And he entered the synagogue, and for three months spoke out boldly and argued persuasively about the kingdom of God. When some stubbornly refused to believe and spoke evil of the way before the congregation, he left them, taking the disciples with him and argued daily in the lecture hall of Tyrrhenis. This continued for two years, so that all the residents of Asia, both Jews and Greeks, heard the word of the Lord." Um, so we get this sort of tension here with, uh, Paul and Apollos, and, um, and also with Priscilla and Aquila. Apollos will learn, he gets more credit later on in Paul's writings, uh, and we see quite the, the, uh, tension between the two, because there are some people who really think Apollos is the bee's knees of, of everything, you know? He's well-educated, he's, he's persuasive, uh, but he doesn't know everything. And one of the things that I draw from this is that there is always room for us to learn new things as Christians, you know? Um, if Apollos, who's this like super-educated guy, uh, can learn from tent makers, some of the most important things about his faith, then how much more so do we have room to learn things as well? Um, and I, what, what comes to my mind is that it's not so much where we learn, but that we learn, that, um, that matters most. When I went to, to Berea College as a, an undergraduate, right out of high school, um, I, I've told folks that I really learned how to learn at Berea. I learned how to, to research stuff, I learned how to think about stuff, I learned how to do all, I learned how to learn. Um, and even though Berea doesn't have like some big fancy name and, you know, is, is unknown even in, um, some educational circles. Um, Duke, however, when I got there, you know, if I told people I was going to Duke, everybody was like, oh, you're going to Duke, huh? And it's, um, it's like Duke, uh, had the, the name recognition, but I really learned how to learn at Berea. And, um, so I, I think it's important for us to always be learning new things, you know? Um, and if Apollos can learn some new stuff from tent makers, then so can we. Um, it's four o'clock. Let me, uh, let me kind of breeze through this last little bit, if I may. Y'all still on board to keep going, or want to push it down for next week? A few more minutes? Okay?
Okay.
All right. Um, so then we, we get down here in, uh, the middle of 19. "God did extraordinary miracles through Paul, so that when the handkerchiefs or aprons that had touched his skin were brought to the sick, their diseases left them, and the evil spirits came out of them. Then some itinerant Jewish exorcists tried to use the name of the Lord Jesus over those who had evil spirits, saying, 'I adjure you by the Jesus whom Paul proclaims.' Seven sons of a Jewish high priest named Skiva were doing this, but the evil spirit said to them in reply, 'Jesus I know, and Paul I know, but who are you?' Then the man with the evil spirit leaped on them, mastered them all, and so overpowered them that they fled out of the house, naked and wounded." That's such a hilarious passage, isn't it? Um, "When this became known to all residents of Ephesus, both Jews and Greeks, everyone was awestruck, and the name of the Lord Jesus was praised. Also, many of those who became believers confessed and disclosed their practices. A number of those who practiced magic collected their books and burned them publicly. When the value of these books was calculated, it was found to come to fifty thousand silver, silver coins. So the word of the Lord grew mightily and prevailed." Uh, that is some funny stuff, isn't it? Uh, that this demon-possessed guy says, "I don't know who you are. I know who Paul is and who God is, but, who Jesus is, but, uh, you I've never heard of," and then beats the heck out of them, and they flee naked and wounded from the house. Um, and then all the, uh, other people who had been practicing magic hear about this and decide to have an old-fashioned book burning. Now, the difference between a book burning back then and a book burning now is that books were extremely expensive in the ancient world. You, there was no printing press, and most of the, uh, the pages that were used were made of, uh, animal skin, and it was quite the expensive thing to get something that you could write on, and quite the, uh, extended process to even make, um, vellum. Uh, and papyrus wasn't any cheaper either, and wasn't readily available except in, in Egypt and a few other places. So, um, book burning would have been a big, big thing back then, um, which is why we're told about how much the value of those books was. Um, my Greek professor at Duke, Dr. Efferd, he, uh, he had been teaching at Duke for almost 50 years, uh, when I was there, and the man's still alive and still teaching stuff now, and he's in, I think he's close to 90, if not, uh, older. And, um, he was asked when he first got on staff at Duke, um, in the, the 60s, uh, they were having a, a book burning thing. I don't know what book it was for. I think it might have been, uh, Catcher in the Rye or something similar. And, um, in Rocky Mount, they were having a book burning, and one of the, uh, reporters from the, um, the Raleigh paper came and asked him what he, as, as, you know, a new young Duke professor, what he felt like about that, um, as a religious person. And he said, "Well, I think it shows how very far we've come as a society." And the reporter was confused, and she's like, "But they're burning books? Like, how does that show that we've come a far way as a society? Is that not the, the epitome of, of, um, uh, censorship and everything else?" And he says, "Well, we used to burn the authors." So, um, book burning, I think, uh, shows that we've come a long way, because we used to burn the authors. Um, I'll draw your attention to, uh, verse 21. "Now, after these things had been accomplished, Paul resolved in the Spirit to go through Macedonia and Achaia, and then to go on to Jerusalem. He said, 'After I've gone there, I must see Rome.'" Um, this verse right here of verse 21 is a turning point in Acts for us, much as when, uh, Jesus in the Gospels turns his face towards Jerusalem. Um, it symbolizes a turning point for him in that he had been going around and spreading the word of God and everything, but when Jesus turns his face towards Jerusalem, it's a big change, and he knows that he's going to face, uh, death and crucifixion and all of that, and the events of Holy Week and, and Easter. And so Jesus sets his face, um, in the same way in the book of Acts here in verse 21. "Now, after these things had been accomplished, Paul resolved in the Spirit." Um, it's like Paul, another way of translating would be Paul set his face, um, and in this situation, we could say, set his face towards Rome, where he would likely meet his end. Um, and so we, uh, we get a little bit of stuff here about, uh, Paul in Ephesus. Um, and so, um, let me, let me pick up here in the, uh, middle of this chapter. Um, let's see. Oh, okay, so he's in it. Let me just summarize for you. He's in Ephesus. Ephesus was the site of the Temple of Diana or the Temple of Artemis. Uh, Artemis, if you're Greek, Diana, if you're Roman. Um, and that was one of the seven wonders of the ancient world, uh, the Temple of, of Diana. And so there's a big, uh, group of folks who, uh, made a lot of money making idols, um, and little trinkets and souvenirs and stuff out of silver for, uh, as, as people would visit this Temple of Diana or Artemis. And the, uh, the idol makers get pretty upset at Paul, because Paul is cutting into their business. Um, and so they stir up the crowd and stuff, and, um, Paul, he, uh, he tries to defend himself and all this, but the equivalent of the mayor, um, gets everybody to, to calm down a little bit, because they, one thing you don't want to have happen in, uh, in the Roman Empire is for there to be unrest. The Romans do not deal with, uh, peaceful protest or unpeaceful protest. The Romans do not deal with anything except peace, and anything other than perfect peace is squashed with perfect violence very, very quickly. And so the, um, the mayor of the town basically, uh, gets Demetrius and the artisans to, uh, to, to calm down and, um, says that, you know, "We're in danger of being charged with rioting today, since there is no cause that we can give to justify this commotion." And he dismisses that assembly, um, and, you know, basically asks Paul to, to stop with all this. So, um, we got a lot of, of ground that we covered today in all this, but, uh, thoughts, reflections, comments that you would offer up? Well, how are you finding, um, reading through Acts? Is there anything that in, in reading through this thus far in our, our course of study together, that, um, that you noticed about reading through Acts that you didn't notice before?
I think it just brings to light, you know, how back then, you know, there was rebellion and trouble, and, you know, it kind of relates to today, you know? Just a lot of parallels, I think, with, with things that we still see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
It, uh, it often gives me pause whenever I see some of the same things. Uh, so, somebody said once that history, uh, may not necessarily repeat itself, but it does rhyme. Um, and I, I found that to be a, a pretty fascinating statement, that history might not repeat itself, but it does rhyme. Um, uh, several years ago, back when I was still in Asheville, there were some issues about police brutality, uh, with the, uh, the guy up in New York, uh, Ferlando Castilla, I think was his name, um, who was selling cigarettes singly, um, and was, wound up being suffocated, uh, there on the street by one of the cops. Um, I think that was, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I forget the guy's name totally, but, um, I was watching some protests about that, and I happened to be reading through a lot of poetry, because Cora, my oldest daughter, was going through some stuff in her, uh, class, and they were talking about the Harlem Renaissance and stuff. And Langston Hughes is one of my favorite poets. I, I just love Langston Hughes' stuff, and I started, I, I pulled out his stuff, and I started reading through it, and it was just like, oh my gosh, it's, it's almost as though he was writing his stuff, like, back in the Harlem Renaissance in the, the 20s and 30s. Um, it was just like he was writing for today. Um, so if you are interested in reading some, some interesting poetry, Langston Hughes is always a, a good one. But yeah, as I read through the Bible, I'm always struck, depending on what's happening in the world, um, at, at just how apt so many of the, the stories and teachings apply today, almost as though they were written just for us, even though they weren't, uh, even though they were written to a different culture and a different people and a different time and all that. And there is always some danger in equivocation of saying, well, this is just like that. You, you know, there's always some, some nuance that's there that we'll miss, but at the same time, I'm always struck at how with different things happening in the world, we go back and read scripture, and we can see it in entirely new ways. And I think that's one of the, the pure wonders and miracles of, of our scriptures, is just how, how broad it is. Um, so I, I, I love the book of Acts in particular, because it shows the church in its, in its infancy, so to speak, and it shows how the church is growing and changing and adapting, um, across different cultures, across different places, across different languages and peoples and, and all of that. And so I, I find this book to be really, really timely for us in our, in our own place here today. Um, I, I thought so. I mean, one of the reasons I wanted us to look at this book and study it right after Easter was because of what was at that point, when I picked this out as being the, the book that I wanted us to look at. Um, general conference in the Methodist Church was coming up, and there's been all sorts of talk of, uh, schism and the, the Methodist Church, you know, dividing up, particularly based on issues of, uh, human sexuality. And it's like, wow, there's all sorts of stuff of people disagreeing and splitting up over issues of human sexuality in Acts. Um, but I never would have thought it would have such releva, I would have never thought that it had relevance with regards to anything like riots and stuff like that. And it's like, oh, well, you know, when you go back and you read stuff, um, Karl Barth, uh, B-A-R-T-H, even though it's, looks like it would be Barth, uh, his, his name's Karl Barth. Uh, he was a Lutheran theologian back in the day, um, about a, a generation ago or so, and he, he wrote a lot of really wonderful stuff. But, uh, one thing that Barth, uh, said is that you need to read the Bible, read with the Bible in one hand and the newspaper in the other. Um, and there's a lot to be said for that. Uh, one of my favorite Episcopal priests and pastors and, um, sermon writers is a, uh, a lady who's, um, you know, Episcopal, her name's Flannery, I'm sorry, her name is, um, uh, gosh, Fleming Rutledge. Um, and she has a book called The Bible in the New York Times, uh, that was, you know, 20 years old or so. And it's a, a pretty fascinating read as well. So I encourage you to always look at scripture first and foremost, and, um, regardless of whatever political stuff is out there and whatever, because it just comes from all over the place anymore. anymore, and it's hard to know even where to find a middle line or a baseline in all this. And so I encourage you to read Scripture first and the newspaper second, or whatever, wherever we get our news from, because first and foremost, our duty is to be disciples of Jesus. So, well, thanks, y'all. Next week, we'll have our ninth session. It'll be Wednesday at three again, and we'll look at Acts, chapter twenty, verse one through twenty-two, twenty-four. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Eunice, would you like, thank you, first of all, for reading our scripture for us for Sunday. Would you like for me to come by? And I know we had talked a little bit before the study. Would you like for me to come by and film you and Terry at a distance, or would you like to come to the church here and us do that tomorrow?
Well, it doesn't matter. I just, I have an appointment at ten, and he has a meeting at the museum at eleven, and I don't know how long it'll take him.
Okay, well, just text me if you would. I'm open anyway.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Bye.